All right, let's go ahead and get started. I'm going to call this October 12th Sammamish Planning Commission meeting to order. Let us start out with roll call. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
I am Mark Baughman, and I'm here. John Bachman here. Ajay Chakravani.
Here.
And Sudhara Sundhara.
Here.
And Mike Bresko, I believe, is on the meeting. Mike, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Great. Thanks for joining in. And Syed Safavian, I believe, is unavailable this evening. Okay, let's move on to the meeting accessibility statement.
The city is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801 to 28th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments: Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes of representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comment through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide a public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To give public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link https://us06web.zoom.us/j/82822648794. To give public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: US+1-253-215-8782. Webinar ID: 828-226-48794.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next approval of this evening's agenda. Anybody have any comments about the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next approval of the minutes from our September 14th regular Sammamish Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any corrections to the meeting minutes? Nope, looks like those are good to go, so we'll call those approved. Next, we have non-agenda public comment. I'll just remind everybody that we have on our agenda this evening, public hearing and discussion about the Climate Action Plan. So if you have things other than that you'd like to comment on, now's the time. Looks like Mary's primed and ready to go, so let's go ahead, Mary.
Good evening. My name is Mary Victor. I've been in Sammamish 23 years. For non-agenda, I wanted to speak about something called Transfer of Development Rights. And I believe it's non-agenda, but I'd like you to actually include it in, so I sent an email to that. But just in case you or the public are not aware of what Transfer of Development Rights, I wanted to do a little bit of background. So I've recently printed you guys, this is the geologic hazards area in the city. So all along here, we're really not supposed to be developing, and development has occurred because of a seven-year moratorium and not recognizing things and other than that. And we would like to not have those places develop anymore and develop in the centers, particularly Town Center. So for example, where I've shown here before, where it's just the dark red, where I live in Tamarack, that is a landslide hazard area. There is no possibility to do a transfer of development right from that area, because the code only says you can be an erosion hazard area. Well, the erosion hazard areas are orange, and they're mostly around the dark red. So the only place you can't do it from is a place that you kind of desperately need to do it from. And I recently just did a map for City Council of this area and showed 13 unlucky homes that tried to build and foreclosed once, twice, or three times, or people lost money on, because it's just really too hard to build in. So we'd really rather have those work somewhere in the centers. They can go different places. The city actually does have a Transfer Development Rights program. It is recommended by the GMA in their Critical Areas Handbook. And it's one of those things that instead of giving people a house, you give them away or process to get out of it. The TDR program, as I remember it, does allow 20 to 75 units that could be purchased. A lot of them are from King County on what you might know as the Emerald Necklace on the outside of the city. So the city can get up to 75 of those sold. And 20 had to be purchased and used in Town Center before they could be active. And I believe STCA has purchased 22 of those, but they aren't using them yet in Town Center, and some of the code needs to get changed. So we do have a Transfer Development Rights program. It is stalled, and it could be made functional. I did a docket for it in 2019, 2020, 20, before COVID. And it's in the mix for the next two years. So hopefully, you'll hear more about Transfer Development Rights. It's where you have a parcel where you could build on, but it's really better not to, or you don't want to. And then you would be able to sell that development right and have it used somewhere else. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that. It's particularly important for geo-hazard and critical areas. And for the agenda part, I will read the part that's actually related to climate change. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else in the room for non-agenda? Well, we're going to do the public hearing later, so if it's for the Climate Action Plan. It's up to you. Oh, I'm going to watch that.
The advisory group, I have some comments on the Climate Action Plan I'd like to share. First, I'll state the obvious. The solution to reducing our greenhouse gas output from 578,000 metric tons of CO2 today by approximately 513,000 metric tons by 2050 is to electrify. The reductions outlined in the City Council Resolution when plotted versus time show an inflection point at 2030 and 2040. However, the overall slope equates to about 20,000 metric tons decrease per year. That means you can make your big electric purchases when the car or heater you possess needs to be replaced. Studies on a national level project that the U.S. electricity production is about 1.2 terawatts today, and that will need to grow by about a factor of three. According to a recent article in Science, there are about two terawatts of wind, solar, and storage projects proposed, but they're stuck in limbo because of the interconnection queue. I'm hopeful that the independent system operators and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission will figure out how to deliver all this new renewable energy. According to the DOE, 56 gigawatts of renewable energy is coming online this year, and 14 and 1/2 gigawatts of fossil fuel, mostly coal, generating capacity is being retired. You can see some of this progress in Figure 4 bar chart on page 10. Note that the emissions from electricity in 2030 are gone. The Washington State Clean Energy Transformation Act is requiring utilities to be carbon-neutral by 2030. PSC's proposed plan to do this is to be 80% renewables and 20% carbon-neutral by 2030. The 20% will still likely be from natural gas burning power plants, but the utility will need to offset the CO2 in some manner. That same figure also identifies the biggest challenge, in my view, burning natural gas to heat our homes and water, cook our food, and an assortment of other uses. Coupled with the expected growth over the next 26 years, that number is inching up rather than down. Educating everyone in the community, including preschoolers and old people like me, to electrify must be our mission. 2030, 230.
Pretty good, pretty close. Thanks, Steve. Anybody else in the room? Do we have anybody online?
And we have one hand raised, Mr. Stickney. I'll promote you to panelist.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney in Sammamish here today. Odds are you guys already know this, but in two days or so, on October the 14th, we're going to have 91% of an annular eclipse. So subject to there not being clouds, which is a tough one, odds are there will be. And I'm reading online, the eclipse is going to start at 8:09 in the morning and reach its maximum in Washington at 9:20 and ends at 10:39. And we are roughly 300 miles out of the path of, you know, totality. And this is going to be an interesting one, because it's that, the moon's not close enough to completely block the sun, so there's the ring of fire, but it's still pretty dark. Anyway, that's just an interesting thing happening in a couple of days in the morning. Odds are, some of you watched the candidate forum held yesterday evening from 6:00 to 7:30 by the King County Asian Pacific Coalition. You can go to the IACS website, and they should have that posted soon. There were seven of the eight candidates there. It was an hour and a half. I think a good amount of information was shared at that event. I'd keep, if you have an interest, it was a good one to watch. I enjoyed watching it. Roughly 30 to 40 people were on the Zoom call. It was not live, besides the seven council candidates. Also, if you got a chance to watch Tuesday's City Council meeting, the two parts on that council about, or meeting about the mid-by budget, that was good information and somewhat expected. The second part of that meeting was a report from the city where, for over two years, maybe two and a half now, the city, through council requests in 2020 and 2021, wanted to study high-risk stormwater issues in the Thompson and Inglewood Basin for George Davis and Zakuus Creek. And I got a lot out of it. I really enjoyed it. But the science and the research over two years showed that our current stormwater standards, which we adopted in 2016, which had been more stringent than any others under the King County Surface Water Manual, plus the Sammamish addendum, work perfectly. They mimic predeveloped forested conditions at full buildout of our land use, and that was good news. So take a look at that. I think it was, in my opinion, a very important hour and well-presented, and lots of background data. Okay, appreciate the chance. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else with their hand raised? All right. Thanks for your public comments. Let's move on to our main topic for this evening, which is a public hearing about the Climate Action Plan. I've done this before, I'll do it again, which maybe helps you and certainly helps me to remember the sequence of events when we do a public hearing. So we'll have a presentation this evening, and since David, Director David Pyle is right straight in front of me, he'll be doing the presentation, and he's within spitball range. And then we'll have the opportunity to ask questions to David and the staff. And then, once that's done, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll take public comments, and then we'll close the public hearing. And then we will, hopefully, if you're so inclined, someone will make a motion in a second. We'll have discussion, modify, do whatever we do, and eventually, as the discussion winds down, we'll take a vote. So that's kind of the sequence. And like I say, sometimes I repeat that just to help myself remember that I get it in the right order. Okay, so let's get started. David, turn it over to you.
Good evening, Chair Baughman, Planning Commission, David Pyle, Community Development. This evening, we continue with the commission review of the proposed draft of the city's first Climate Action Plan. We are pleased to present to you tonight an updated version of the draft. It's not forwarding. There we go. Following development guided by a community advisory group, the first public draft was published for a joint Parks and Planning Commission meeting that was held at the end of summer. After that meeting, the draft was again edited to incorporate feedback from the joint meeting and republished for planning commission review. The commission held a workshop on the draft Climate Action Plan on September 14th. Feedback was again incorporated, and a new draft published for this evening's public hearing and commission deliberation. The goal of this evening's meeting is to hold a public hearing on the draft, deliberate on any final changes that the commission might see appropriate, and make a recommendation to the City Council in the draft, on the draft plan. The City Council is scheduled to pick up review of the draft at a City Council workshop to be held on Wednesday, November 8th, and finally, to hold a public hearing on the draft at the December 5th City Council meeting, where it is anticipated the City Council will adopt the plan. One thing to keep in mind as we discuss the draft Climate Action Plan this evening is that this is a working draft, and we will be continuing to improve the document over time. Before we move to the public hearing portion of the agenda, we wanted to provide a high-level overview. Following direction to develop a Climate Action Plan, staff convened a community advisory group to assist with the development of the plan. The community advisory group met through the spring and summer of 2023 and ultimately made recommendation on a draft Climate Action Plan. We have included the community advisory group recommendation as an exhibit with this evening's published agenda bill. As the community advisory group wrapped up its review of the draft document, there were a few outstanding items that individual members of the group wanted to forward alongside the recommendation. These were items that, for whatever reason, did not float to the surface in group discussions or maybe did not resonate with the larger group, but that individual group members felt were worth forwarding into the next phase of the legislative process. Here you see these comments summarized. These outstanding items are also found in Exhibit 5 with this evening's packet, and a response is included in this exhibit as well. These are additional outstanding items. Again, these are also included with a response as Exhibit 5 within the evening's meeting packet, within this evening's meeting packet. In addition to working with the community advisory group, or CAG, to develop the draft, staff have reached out to stakeholders to provide an update on the status of the plan and to orient them as to how the document is laid out and where there might be points of interest relevant to their role in the community. Over the past few weeks, staff have met with the school districts, master builders, the Snoqualmie Tribe, Pugetstown Energy, and the Water and Sewer Districts. These meetings were generally very positive and complimentary to the work the city is doing. However, there were a few themes that emerged. Specifically, while there was general consensus around the need to electrify if we are to meet our very aggressive goals, there was concern around mandating electrification and a feeling that an overnight mandate to electrify could impact operations of some of our government counterparts who operate facilities in Sammamish and could have a negative impact on the price of housing and the delivery of housing, as some of these types of electric mechanical equipment can be hard to source. These stakeholders advocated for a phase-in period for electrification, something we will get to here in a minute. Other comments range from identification of partnership opportunities to what things a city can do to help meet these goals. We have listed these here for your consideration. The need to partner with multiple stakeholders on these efforts was something we all agreed on. We did receive one letter from the Lake Washington School District that included comments consistent with those listed here. That letter has been uploaded to Civic Web and was also forwarded to planning commissioners via email. As for the comments we heard on electrification, one option we have is a phased conversion approach as opposed to an immediate mandate. Under this option, we would first start with outreach and education, followed by the development of options and prioritization of changes. This would promote awareness and prepare community members and stakeholders for a coming mandate, and help raise awareness of the challenges around the city's residential emissions profile. Finally, we would begin to mandate electrification of all buildings in the city. This would also allow further work with PSC to ensure the electrical grid is ready to support this transition, and electrical capacity exists to support electrification at the anticipated rate of implementation. If the commission chose to soften the approach to electrification, a motion to modify BEU 2.4 would be needed. Staff assessment of the language of this action statement is that there is currently tension between the actual wording of the action and the description that accompanies the action statement. Staff recommend making the changes annotated with a star and changing the language of BEU 2.4 to better align with the phased approach shown in the previous slide, and also incorporating language into the recommendation letter to council that highlights the tension of mandating electrification and the costs of making that transition. If this is something the commission would like to do, we can revisit this slide after the public hearing when a motion is being developed. At the Planning Commission workshop, staff identified a process by which we could collect and track feedback from the commission and bring that feedback forward as part of the public hearing. Accordingly, staff have divided comment received into the categories previously identified. There has also been some additional feedback received from Commissioner Bresko yesterday, so please remind me to bring that up at the end of the presentation, as we want to make sure that is not lost in the shuffle this evening. As previously outlined, we have sorted comment into three categories. Minor corrections or updates that can immediately or were immediately made, that can immediately be made or were already made. Those comments that don't impact work plan or budget in scale and scope, but that we really need direction from the commission on if we should add them to the draft Climate Action Plan or not. And finally, those comments that do not impact, or excuse me, that do impact the work plan or budget and require additional policy analysis, and will be forwarded to the City Council for consideration with the Sustainability Commission work plan. Here we have Category 1 updates that were either already made or we had intended to make but are held up by the need for a data report. In the case of the last item listed, we had wanted to update the transportation emissions profile to better reflect the makeup of vehicle types. However, we have been waiting for data report from the State Department of Licensing. Just as soon as we receive that report, we will update the Climate Action Plan to integrate that data. We anticipate this happening for the November 8th City Council workshop version of the draft Climate Action Plan document. These Category 1 items are also included in this evening's packet. As a reminder, Category 2 items are those items we need the commission to take action on. If there is no motion from the commission to add these with a second and four votes in favor, the item will not be added. Here are the Category 2 items. We can revisit the slide later when a motion is being developed. These are also included in the packet as an exhibit. Category 3 items are those that will be forwarded to the City Council for consideration on inclusion in the Sustainability Commission work plan, as they either would have impacted the Climate Action Plan work plan, were not feasible due to staffing and timeline limitations, or would not have been possible to take on due to project budget constraints. Here we have summarized the Category 3 comments. While I'm not a big fan of reading slides, this is one worth reading out loud. The first is to task the Sustainability Commission with development of an educational infographic that demonstrates how electrification affects the city's electrical grid and that builds awareness of the various components of the electrical system from generation to end-user consumption. Second is task the Sustainability Commission with creating a one-page handout to help the public understand the changes in electricity and benefits considerations and processes related to electrification. Recommend, the third is recommend to the City Council that it consider restarting the transportation master plan, and the Sustainability Commission be tasked with identifying updates to the Climate Action Plan for alignment with the transportation master plan once complete. I do note with Item 3 that there is ongoing work with the comprehensive plan that might already take care of that with the transportation element of the comp plan, so that might not be a big lift for the Sustainability Commission. Item 4 is task the Sustainability Commission with identifying actions and work plan items to increase rates of waste diversion within the city. And Item 5 is to task the Sustainability Commission with identifying educational and communication strategies to address misinformation about climate change, the Climate Action Plan and its implementation, as well as the city budget. Six, this is to task the Sustainability Commission with further evaluating the return on investment of Climate Action Plan actions to better prioritize actions in future work plans. And Number 7 is to task the Sustainability Commission with creating educational materials for heating and cooling options and electrical vehicle charging that include approximate costs and options to help inform decision maker making. Now I can get into the Commissioner Bresko comments. The Category 1 comments that Commissioner Bresko provided was that there was a number, or excuse me, the goals in the executive summary did not line up. We agree. We've highlighted to the left column where the correct goal is stated as presented in the Resolution R 2023-1000. The item on the right side, under Goal 1, does need to be updated to align with the actual goal that was presented in the resolution. So this is a typo. This comes from drafting, so we apologize for this. This will be updated with the draft that is forwarded to the City Council. The next item was a math typo. The number in red here, which is the starting point on the trajectory, does not add up to the three columns. It should add up. We do agree with this, and we will be making this change so that it does add up to the right number, which I believe to be 578006. Category 2 comments, and I won't go through the text here. I think that the general theme is that, in reading through the Climate Action Plan, Commissioner Bresko recognized that a large portion of the lift in achieving our wedge or our reduction trajectory is taken on through federal, regional, state-regional, and state and county efforts, and that the role the city has is somewhat small in taking on that entire wedge. And Commissioner Bresko was recommending to the commission that you add the language that attainment of these goals requires actions by federal and Washington State agencies, Sammamish's residents, businesses, and municipal entities, and Sammamish's government operations. The majority of greenhouse gas emission reduction comes from actions by federal and Washington State agencies, while the least comes from changes within Sammamish's government operations. Really just a recognition that our own city government operations are somewhat constrained in the effect that they can have on that wedge as compared to some of the larger agencies, federal and state, et cetera. So that was one that I just wanted to highlight for you, and you can add that to a motion later if you'd like to see that also added. There was a Category 3 comment that, if desired, the commission could recommend the Sustainability Commission enhance the planned metrics to stratify according to each of the entities contributing to the goal attainment. So just really wanting to track goal attainment from each of the different entities identified that are also responsible and have a role in driving that trajectory through the wedge diagram. And I'm sure you could ask Commissioner Bresko about this once we get to the deliberation portion of the evening. At this point, I wanted to turn it back over to the chair and see if there were any questions this evening before moving on to the public hearing and deliberation.
Thanks, David. Okay, who has questions? Oh my. Mr. Commissioner Bresko, what about you? Do you have questions?
I couldn't tell what your "oh my" meant, if that was like everybody put their hand up all at once and nobody moved. The disadvantage of being remote. Actually, one question, and then maybe a clarification. The question is that education showed up often in the Climate Action Plan, and it was what the community can do. And yet, there was one specific action that called out for education. And then we also see where there's some of the, you know, categories listed where there's specific, like, education related to natural gas use in the homes. And I guess, maybe this is a comment or a question, but I wonder if we could work towards having a task for the Sustainability Commission that basically says to include education of the community on, like, many of the aspects of how we can reduce greenhouse gases, rather than very specific about natural gas use in the home or wastes or things like that. So that's, I guess, maybe we'll move later to a motion, but the question is, like, was there a specific reason that, you know, wasn't like a more global, provide education? And I think really, the only place was in R 2.3 about education on ecosystems. So it seemed like the education piece was, you know, kind of not really highlighted in the Climate Action Plan itself.
Chair, can I add to that comment?
Go ahead, Ajay.
So that's a great point, Commissioner Bresko, that you mentioned. This was one thing when, during the CAG, I was biting my tongue every time we talk about education. How do we do this education? How do, how do we do this education as part of the climate action without actually impacting the environment? And I think of ideas. I'd come up with an idea and bite my tongue, like, should we put up a flyer? A flyer also causes some of the things that we don't, that we want to take off, right? So again, now I'll swallow the question, the thought that I had, and then wait for another one, and wait for another one. Finally, I'm coming around one point, and this is something that we will, we will have to take up, like you said, with the sustainability force, which is to look, it's a task force, which is to look at some form of a digital information dissemination that we would have for the, for the city, to be able to say, this is the way that we will, that we'll achieve it, this is the way that we will get forward on it, this is the way that we, that we are progressing or that we are not progressing, and we are at a green or a yellow or a red when we compare 2030 goals versus the 2050 goals and so on and so forth, that we'll have a lot of opportunity to do that. This is one idea that will work with the, with the CAG as well, because there was a lot of youngsters in the CAG, and we could, we could get them up to come and do something for this one, remain engaged with it and to build up for it. But this idea is in its very, very early days. It would come to that point, but that's the one way that I thought that we would be ahead of the curve when it comes to the education and not behind the curve or do something that might not, that might go against our overall goal. Thank you.
John, did you have something? Actually, can I, I wanted to just make a comment about the education part of it, not intending to be a naysayer, but just to point out that we've frequently, in the actions of the planning commission and in other groups in the city, talk about the idea of education for the community. And I want to just sort of point out that there's not a magic solution to get through to the folks in the community, and there's been a lot of things tried, and it's quite difficult. And I think that sometimes there's a whole program, and if you get 5% of that through to a reasonable number of people in the community, that's a huge success. It's just a challenge, the way things are now. And so in some respects, my assumption with the focus on the natural gas was because that appears to be the biggest issue for us achieving our climate goals. That was why there was a focus on that topic, because if you're going to try to get through the, you know, the communication challenges, then you focus on the thing that's the biggest thing. I don't in any way disagree that it should be broader than that, but being realistic based on history, it's a challenge to get more than, than one topic through the filter. So just to keep that in mind, I guess. Did you have a, oh, John had a comment, unless you have something, David, in response to any of that discussion? No?
Well, I, I mean, I think it's really an interesting debate. We have Rose here, who's our sustainability coordinator, and she'll be working with the Sustainability Commission on this, so she's taking this all in and hearing what you're saying. And, you know, I, I have a real world example. Just two weeks ago, we made the jump from a gas furnace in our house, 20-year-old gas furnace, to a mini split system, and we ditched the gas furnace. And we were able to educate all our neighbors, because they, you know, I sent out a flyer to my neighbors saying, hey, we're going to have a lot of equipment around here, road's going to be blocked, I'm sorry, we're making some energy upgrades, stop by and ask what we're doing. And they all stopped by, one by one, and wanted to see what we're doing, and now they're all interested in this. So it's kind of like when electric cars became a thing, and people rode in an electric car, and then the Teslas came out. And so that is one way that this, you know, we have a lot of ideas. If somebody is doing a heat pump conversion, we could offer a recyclable sign that they could put out in front of their house that says, you know, it made sense for us, it might make sense for you, kind of thing, and just start to get awareness out there in the community about, you know, how this works, because many of my neighbors didn't even know what this was. So it's, you know, it's a pretty interesting, for me, real, real-life example that we just went through two weeks ago.
Can I add more to that, Chief?
Good job. And I have to say, I'm a little stuck on your neighbors getting the flyer going, oh no, what's Pyle doing this time? Okay, go ahead.
Do you have a permit? That's what they asked me.
Are you in Sammamish? I was at the Sammamish last weekend, and then City of Issaquah, they had their Climate Action Plan, like, they had a booth there. And they are actually collaborating with City of Redmond, Kirkland, and I think three cities, and they're working on like a website and everything. I was wondering, once we have our cap, maybe we can talk to them and say, like, hey, what did work, what didn't work, and how is your education program and the website going on? So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So that's my suggestion.
And that's a great example. They have an interlocal that we actually hope to join once we have a Climate Action Plan in place. That's been our barriers, that we're not caught up with them on that policy level yet, so we'll be working on that.
Wonderful.
Yeah, if I could just chime in here, I wasn't sure if you were speaking specifically about the Eastside Climate Challenge website that they have that residents can sign up for and understand their environmental impact. There is also the interlocal agreement with those same cities. The Eastside Climate Challenge is something that we just modeled a Sammamish Climate Challenge after, and that actually went live this past week. So go ahead and check it out on social media, the Sammamish Climate Challenge. All residents in Sammamish are encouraged to join, and you can actually compare with what other households in Sammamish are doing as well. So definitely encourage folks to check that out.
But are we collaborating with the Issaquah and Redmond and all? Are we part of that group too?
We are not yet part of their interlocal agreement. They actually have a meeting in October that they're going to be talking about what cities have to do to join, and having it passed Climate Action Plan is one of those items. So once we have our Climate Action Plan in place, then we can go back to that group and have that conversation.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
John, I think you originally had something, and I interrupted you.
No problem. This is more of a knit than anything. Page seven of the plan, we've got a couple graphics, and it shows the total Sammamish emissions, electricity being one of them. So it doesn't explain that the electricity generation is the cause of the emissions. So someone reading this, not understanding that, well, how's electric, electricity creating all this emission? Maybe a footnote? I mean, I think I've mentioned this before, just to clarify, the percent of clean and non-clean electricity that Puget Power is currently generating, and in the future, obviously, state and federal mandates to change that is a big part of the way that we will advance our, our goals. So somehow noting that, yes, electrification is great, but it's not total yet, just that recognition. Then on page 40, I think it's on page 42, there's the three Rs, reduce, recycle. Anyway, I wanted to add a fourth R, which would be repair. Seems to be a lost art in our community, in our world these days, is something breaks, you just throw it away. But a lot of stuff can be repaired. Somehow, I know that would be a very, very small percentage of increment, but it's something that can be done in our community. And repair could be repairing your deck to get five more years out of it, or, you know, home repairs to improve your insulation, or fixing that toaster. So that's pretty broad range there. And it's just a small thing that we could do. I think that's all I've got.
If I could add a response to that, so I think, I believe traditionally, the three Rs, reduce, reuse, recycle. I think that the reuse, although not readily apparent on its face, also includes the subcategory of repair. But, you know, making sure that that's in the description around the reuse category would be important so that people understand the importance of repair. I remember going to a seminar at the Central Washington University on, on climate change a few months ago, or I guess almost a year ago now, wow. And one of the biggest things they were talking about is repair and longevity out of, out of things like cell phones and other equipment that we have instead of being a throwaway society. With regard to the first item, I believe there is a description in another section of the Climate Action Plan around the electrical, the electric profile and the makeup, the current makeup of our electricity and where it comes from. If there was a way to cross-connect those in the document so that it directs the reader when they see page seven and they see the graphic that shows the electric, electricity, that they're aware of that, that other section that breaks down the profile, you know, our electric profile, where it comes from, and why that, that currently presents a problem, and what PSC is, is, has promised to do about it, and what the state has mandated that PSC do about it. Would that be an adequate connection or correction to make?
Absolutely.
Great. And I'm, I'm looking to Alexis and Aaron and confirming that that is something that is possible, and that I'm not mistaken, that there is another section in there. Yep, great. So that we would put in category one. I think that's an edit that we will just go ahead and make, definitely, so.
Carrie, did you have any comments, questions?
Just that, you know, in the category three with the education, the 3.7, you know, is when we talked about at length, so it was on the bottom. I don't know if that matters versus the others.
There was not an intended hierarchy of those. Yeah, they were just, were listed out there. And really, we wanted to leave it up to the, the council and, you know, you all, if you wanted to direct that we order those, that we could do that. Ultimately, it ends up really being about what low-hanging fruit we have, you know, like, what is, what is the most simple to get to work on immediately as a Sustainability Commission? And then ultimately, which of those can we start to really bring about changes fairly quickly versus those that require more of a long-term investment in staff time and consultant support, in, in really trying to get the, the language right, because it's more complicated.
Okay. And then where did those come from? Was that based on everyone's input or the Climate Action Group?
The category threes were those we heard through comment received from the commission that were sent in through the JOT form and from the last meeting that we had with you that we summarized down. You know, we wanted to make them more along the lines of, of a statement about the, the charge that the Sustainability Commission was being given. Some of what we received was more descriptive, so we tried to synthesize that down into something that is more directive to the Sustainability Commission.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
One question I have is, I wonder if somebody can comment on and remind me where or do we have included in here recommendations about how we'll measure and what the frequency of measuring and reporting on our progress is? I feel like I remember seeing that, but at the moment, I don't remember where that's at. Is that in here, and what does it say?
So I'm, I'm looking to someone, virtually, I see Alexis has unmuted herself, possibly. Were you ready to speak to that?
Yeah, happy to speak to that. So I think ultimately, you know, my, I guess my follow-on question there, when you say measuring, are you talking about measuring greenhouse gas progress and emissions moving forward? Or are you talking about measuring progress toward some of these other goals that are listed?
As with a lot of things, Alexis, I think that, you know, we have to, and we have the opportunity to make a recommendation on how frequently we check in on this. And yeah, it could be, you know, the truth is, I guess, it's got to be the greenhouse gases, and then other things will be dependent on what the Sustainability Commission works on and what further priorities come out of that. But if we don't, practically speaking, do some kind of periodic review to measure progress or decide whether we're achieving any of our goals, then it leaves it pretty open-ended, and it's not really providing the guidance that I think we're kind of obligated to provide. So, you know, it might be as simple as we'll have a report to the, we recommend a report annually to the city council on, you know, summarizing, based on the Climate Action Plan, what's been done and/or, you know, every two years or four years or five years or whatever it is on where we think we're at on our greenhouse gas emissions for the city. That, that kind of outline or basic guidance usually is pretty helpful for, I mean, I know as a commissioner on this commission, that aiming us in the right direction is often helpful.
Miriam, is here, Henda?
Yeah. So on page 37 of the version that's in your packet, under the Sustainability Commission, there's a line that talks about reporting on progress toward goals. So we're seeing 2027, 2030, 2035, 2040, 2045, and 2050. And then there's also, right below that, a section on annual action and progress reporting. And then if you go all the way down to Appendix H, I believe it is, where it has all of our actions, there are metrics for each of those. And some of them, it does specify how often they'd be measured. Most of them, I believe, are going to be annual just because of the data that we get from other sources. But you'll see that in the metrics column of Appendix H.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what I was looking for. I just want to make sure that there is an expectation for the new commission, that there's some reporting level. Thanks. Anybody else have questions for the team?
This is Commissioner Bresko. Let me just build a little bit on that, because actually, both of the two, the category two item I submitted and category three are related, in a sense, metrics. The category two was, as I initially read through this, I thought, oh, this is what Sammamish is doing, and meaning the, really, the government, you know, the percent reductions for the goals. A more careful reading, it's like, oh no, you know, many entities will help contribute. But that takes a bit of a careful reading, and if you get to, you know, are we delivering on the plan? You know, Miriam, to your point, there's a number of metrics, and they're measuring each of the actions, but because of the, you know, who's responsible, whether it's the federal or state or the local government, you know, organization, Sammamish government itself, it could be tricky to see, are we really making progress if a lot of the progress actually depends on, you know, entities outside of our direct control? So my thinking was, if, and the reason I have those separated is one is really more of a, an explanation maybe in the executive summary that, hey, look, you know, we're really depending on a lot of elements coming together to reach these goals. The category three, I'm assuming it's going to take a little bit more work, because some of these can be a little bit tricky to parse and separate, if you will, and to be able to have that kind of delineation of, are we getting the benefit from a federal program or the state program? So just to elaborate on my thinking there, it might be sufficient in the sections, Miriam, that you just outlined, to provide the, the kind of metrics that I was thinking about. It wasn't quite so obvious to me when I was reading through all of that, though. So just to put a little context in the, you know, comments that David Pyle had presented earlier.
Anything else, Mike?
No.
Anybody else? Anything else from you, David, or anybody else on the, want to talk about? Oh, go ahead, John.
I just want to thank staff and the consultants and the community. This has been, and the task, task force is an incredible process and a huge amount of work. And this is a living document. We're not done. We have a long way to go, but we have a starting point, and I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that and point out that it, it's becoming a common requirement amongst cities, and for good reason. So it's good that we're taking action even in a busy year with a lot of other things going on. I think that's a, that's a great sign for the city. Okay, thanks. Oh, go ahead, Ajay.
I just want to add one note to thank David for his leadership in this whole thing. Thank you so much for the work that you've done. Thank you so much for holding the fort when some of us were not there, keeping us all up to date with the information and everything. This was invaluable. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. One of the parts I like about this whole thing is meeting new people, and I really have enjoyed, you know, meeting new, making new acquaintances in the community. And we look forward to the next chapter, handing it off to Rose for implementation, forming a Sustainability Commission. That's going to be really fun for us. I'm kind of, kind of jealous. I wish I could be, you know, working on these types of topics instead of, you know, zoning and things like know, zoning and things like that, but it's okay.
We might have to make it a standard practice, though. When you're here, you sit right there.
That was probably a dig at us, was it?
All right, thanks. Let's move on. So next thing we'll do is have a public hearing and we'll take public comment. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to make public comment about the climate action plan or the items that have been discussed?
like to point out that the embodied energies of an electric vehicle is higher than it is for an internal combustion engine. And that's correct. But a lot of that is due to the fact that both of those vehicles, especially the battery component, were made with dirty energy. So when the energy used to produce the battery gets, comes from a renewable source, that's going to go down. And the difference roughly is, I found an Argonne National Lab study that also referenced International Energy Authority, that's the nuclear, the UN Nuclear Regulatory Agency, if you will. They're pointing out that the average embodied energy of an ICE vehicle is about six metric tons of CO2. And an electric vehicle of average, say, an average SUV is about eight metric tons. So that two-metric-ton difference, you can make up with that electric vehicle, assuming it had all renewable energies and about 5,000 miles of driving. Now granted, it's not going to be all renewable, at least not today, but it's probably going to get, the differential is going to be made up within about a year's worth of normal driving. What else do we have on here? Oh, a point, I've read a number of articles about the electrical grid infrastructure. One of the things I've found is that there are some utilities, not in this area, but on the East Coast, that have recognized that it's cheaper to harden their system, bury their lines, do what they call spacer lines than it is to come back out after the storm and pay for all the repairs. So there's, I don't know if some of you might remember the old Fram oil filter, pay me now or pay me later story. So anyway, those are kind of some of my thoughts. The biggie being, you only need to save about, per household, about a metric ton per year. We've got 26 years of this plan going forward. So even though education might be difficult, I think we can probably figure out how to get it done in 26 years. I probably won't be the one to do it since I won't be around then, but hopefully some of my kids will. Thanks.
You never know. Thanks, Steve. Who else? Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Phil Ritter. My wife Lynn and I have lived in Sammamish for six years. I'm a CPA and I do financial consulting with nonprofit housing developers. I'm on the steering committee of People for Climate Action and have been a member of the Climate Action Plan Community Advisory Group. This summer, we got a pass on the worst aspects of global heating, the dangerously unhealthy smoke in the air, the extreme heat, and the wildfires approaching residential neighborhoods. We were aware of the thousand uncontrolled wildfires just hundreds of miles north in British Columbia and Alberta, and the significant reduction in hydroelectric generation from the Northwest Dams. A lot of us realized that the IPCC call to reduce fossil fuel use in half in the next six years is not wild-eyed overreaction. The K4C commitment approved by our city council to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by half by 2030 seemed in 2017 to be quite doable. But six years later, our emissions from fossil fuel use have gone up, not down. And the results of our inaction are becoming apparent. The climate action plan you are reviewing tonight will be the basis for the programs and ordinances which will be prioritized over the coming five years or more. It needs to be more robust if we are to have a chance at meeting that 2030 target. Couple of examples that were brought up during the community advisory group, they're in the comments that were not addressed, and I think the plan still needs to be amended to include them. Goal number two on page 16, for the electric vehicle adoption of only 20% by 2030 should be much higher, should be like 50% to be consistent with the overall 50% goal for greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. We're already at about 7%, and I don't think that's an unrealistic goal. We should be aspirational in what we're doing with this plan. There's been some conversation about this goal, BEU 2.2 on page 19, gives the city six years to require building energy performance disclosure. That's an awful long time. There are a lot of examples out there of what other cities have done in this area. And by 2025, we should be able to have that in place and be starting to collect data to know which homes we really need to focus on for energy conservation and for electrification. The community advisory group also talked about BEU 2.4, and I'd like to address the suggestion that we slow down the mandatory electrification. What we're talking about with electrification is methane. Methane is 80% worse than CO2 in terms of global heating. Most of the methane emissions don't come at your stove or your furnace. They come way up the line, starting with the wellhead, all the transportation, the different handling mechanisms and so forth. And every study keeps showing leakage at a higher and higher level of methane. So the sooner we can actually turn the valves off and stop the methane altogether, the better. Any move to slow down that electrification, I think, is just contradicted. And besides, the goal itself in 2.4 gives a lot of flexibility. All it says is mandate all-electrical, all-electric mechanical equipment with new construction, which is going to be required by the new building code anyway, and major renovations for all building types and forms of ownership. What we ought to do is when one of these AC heat pumps, the one-way heat pumps, wears out after 12, 15 years, it should be mandatory, you go in to get your building permit, you have to replace it with a two-way heat pump instead of replacing it with another one-way and keeping your gas furnace. The cost is just not that much higher. If the planning commission agrees with these suggested changes, we ask that you include them in your report to the city council for their consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Phil. Looks like Mary's up next.
Hi, Mary Victor, Sammamish, 23 years. So I wanted to say especially thanks for all the great technology information that you guys are presenting. It's really interesting to learn. I think more people need to hear about it. And thanks to the committee that worked to get everything done and the great staff and new staff that we have with the process moving forward. I left my notes at home, so I tried to read things here as we go. First of all, I'm a very visual person. I really liked the visuals that are in it. The photos are also in there. I think most of them are actually from the city. So maybe up at the front page or something, you could put a photo credit and say that they were taken by people or local people and just give credit that way. I think almost all of them are local, except maybe the windmill and maybe the stacked cardboard. The second thing I wanted to talk about is with the TDRs that I talked about, where you would not develop in the geo-hazard areas and you would send that housing unit or however many credits it's worth up to a center area, hopefully town center. And I talked about transfer development rights. So I would like to have, I think building town center would really help the climate impacts be reduced. So I think that that should be in there. I noticed on page 2076, it just talked about, oh, the other centers, if you get transportation, then that will help. But if you don't eat, like if you live on the school quarter, you shop in school, or you can live without a car, you can ride the bus. I really think you need to do that. And then this is particularly related to transfer of development rights, which are TDRs. That's where you sell the right to develop, but you can still own the land or sell it to other things or parks or save it. And you can save lots that have 40 to 50 trees per house on them doing it. So this is written by King County. It's called Transfer of Development Rights, A Tool for Reducing Climate Warming Emissions. The estimates were done by King County by a research director and a GIS analyst. This is just a few sentences off of page one of 13, which I did email and I highlight. It says, "For years, local governments have used transfer of development rights to protect open space and farmland. But TDR programs can also help local governments achieve meaningful reductions in local greenhouse gas emissions." So this reports from something called Sightline, and they do different reports for King County periodically. So their Sightline's analysis of King County's TDR program and variety of public data sources suggests that a single TDR exchange, that's one house from like an RU or a geo-hazard area, could reduce climate warming carbon dioxide emissions by about 270 metric tons over 30 years compared with development patterns that would otherwise occur. This is a significant reduction, represents half the average emissions of one US resident for the same period. And that all TDR exchanges don't do that. You need to change them from where they would be a one-house on one thing to a stacked somewhere like David Pyle, director, has talked about using mid-rise to try to get affordable housing in places like town center. It says, "This significant reduction represents half the average emissions of one US resident," which I read already, "and TDRs achieve their greatest potential for reducing greenhouse gases when rural or ex-urban landowner sells the right to build their single-family home and a developer in the core purchased that right to increase the floor space for a multi-unit housing." So I just wanted to say, I didn't see TDRs anywhere in it. I didn't actually catch it. It wasn't in there until I got to page 76 and it talked about the other centers. Town center is a really good idea for the climate. We really should do that first. The other centers can develop over time and more gradually. And then we don't really want to go in and do the sub area and change people's community and neighborhoods until after that. And you're going to get the most savings doing that. So I just wanted to bring up those things. Couple of things I've brought up several times, you're probably tired of hearing from me, is there's a lot of people that idle, they just sit in their car and idle. I thought of another example. We used to have a neighbor that they'd get up in the morning and their car's sitting outside because they haven't cleaned out their garage so they can park in it. And to warm up the car, they'd just leave the car in for 20, 30, 40 minutes, just running there. And so I think, like, people need to know that that's a bad thing. Clean out your garage. Start it with a warm car. There was a great gentleman who spoke, I can't remember if it was the most recent city council meeting, and I spoke about recycling and we could get Republic to do a lot more with waste to teach people. So some of the questions that I have are, I heard from Kristi Malchow, who used to be on the city commission and mayor. She said, "ECD, it's not OCD. ECD is empty, clean, and dry." And when you do that, then there isn't contamination. If there's too much contamination, the one neighbor on your street who has junk in there recycling basically ruin it for everybody. So you need to know that. And they used to have great recycling things with the kids at like the farmer's market. Once you teach the kid, then the kid goes home and nags the parent and they make sure everybody in the family does it. So that's one way to learn for education. I did learn from Russell, a guy named Russell, I don't remember if it's first name or last name, he came from Republican spoke, and he said they'd spent $17 million on a sorter. So your recycling gets sorted once and then it gets sorted twice. If they can spend $17 million, and I think we can do a little better job in our own homes, making sure we put the right things in. I also heard from other council members and myself, when I have that Gatorade bottle, do I leave the cap on it or not? Like, do you want the cap or not? We've never answered that question because there are different types of plastics. And I know the plaque, the little caps loose, they get caught in the machines and wreck that $17 million machine. So we need to know that. Big one, pet waste. I see people who never pick it up. I see people who bag it and leave it for me to get to a garbage. I don't even own a dog. I see people that put it in their yard waste. I see people that put it in their garbage. I grew up next to a landfill. My husband does landfill methane leak things and everything. This gentleman said about methane is proper. Pet waste, there's a great thing, I think it's either from Bellevue or Seattle, and it's on how many tons of pet waste there are every day. You do need to know what to do with it. And please don't go on the East Lake Sammamish Trail from your house on the lake. Go take your dog up, have him do it on the gravel and then go back. We're seeing that happen now that East Lake Sammamish Trail is open. The other thing I learned about online, I forget where the first time, it's called zero food waste. Like, my husband loves to eat and always leave two bites of food. So like, we try to make what we can eat, we take what we want, we eat what we take, and then we use leftovers. If we don't want to eat it, put it in the refrigerator. That's what microwave's there for. One of the reasons is, is food decomposes, it makes hydrogen sulfide gas, which is really corrosive, smells bad. When it mixes with water, you get sulfuric acid. And just food waste is another one of those things that produces a lot. So anyway, sorry I left my list at home. I might email later if I feel up to it. But appreciate all that you do and the ability to talk.
Thanks, Mary. Obviously, I don't have a problem with food waste. Just look at me. Okay, anybody else in the room? How about online?
We have one hand raised, Mr. Stickney, I'll promote you to panelist.
Good evening, planning commissioners, staff, consultants, all the public commenters. Really good stuff tonight. I learned a lot. And I know I'm going to show my age, and I'm not a smoker, but I will say that this plan, I would go back to the old, you know, Virginia Slims ad, "We've come a long way, baby." This has come a long way in a year and a half to two years. And the plan, in understanding people who know this a lot more than I do, in general, is really a good plan for the amount of time that went into it. The citizens advisory group or the CAG committee, I can't The Citizens Advisory Group or the CAG Committee, I can't recall the name of it. The whole thing is good. You know, I was looking back through some of my notes, and I remember King County came to the City of Sammamish with K4C back in 2015. And the plan got a little bit stalled for whatever reason, but then got picked up in 2022 and rock and roll. So I endorse it. I want to go back and cover a couple of things. On September 14th, I turned in some comments on the plan that dealt with basically housing affordability comments and town center comments and stormwater comments. I noticed in the final version, the stormwater changes are in sync with what I believe they should be on this plan. And that hangs together with the presentation that happened on Tuesday night. So I was pleased to see those changes made. That's awesome. Specifically though, I've got some specifics. On page nine of your plan, which is page 22 of 126 in the packet, in the third paragraph down, it mentions affordable housing. I believe that should change to housing affordability or cycle-of-life housing affordability. Because in general, in my opinion, affordable housing tends to imply needing subsidy 80% or less, which is important. But in Sammamish, our local needs for cycle-of-life housing are far greater for market-rate housing. And there's a real opportunity in meeting market rate we need, not that we manufacture, there's a big difference, to meet affordable housing. So I'd suggest reversing those words to housing affordability or cycle-of-life housing affordability. On page 14 of, or page 27 of 126 on your PDF, same comment. As Tom Odell used to say, you know, "Dido." So that's the same thing. On page in your plan here, and Mary Victor talked about this a bit tonight, on page 63 of the Climate Action Plan, which is page 76 of 126, I suggest inserting another action, TLU 1.2. And that is to focus on the town center along the lines of what submitted in September the 14th that basically puts the mixed-use development as high priority for town center. And then relabel TCU 1.2 into 1.3, I'm sorry, TLU, excuse me, and TLU 1.3 into 1.4 and call them midterm and longer term. So town center, high priority, shorter term. Redevelop sub-areas, midterm. And changing neighborhoods, longer term. And take a look at the comments in the September 14th packet, because I was quite precise. It doesn't mean I'm correct. It doesn't mean you're going to do it. But give them serious consideration and weight in that. Let's see, the other thing is on page 65 in this current plan, which is 78 of 126, there's good language under action about updating land use policies to align with state, regional, county efforts, prioritize transit-oriented development, affordable housing. I changed that to housing affordability again. Density, walkability, and mixed use. But somehow, some way, I'd be specific. You're putting a lot of quantified, specific things in here. And the community has been doing work this year on quantifying housing needs. There's quite a bit that's been turned in by the public commenters as well. And I would add a sentence to this or work it in somehow in this point to say, "Further, appropriately adjust zoning on city's future land use map based on optimal housing supply numbers to meet past, present, and future local lifetime and legacy housing needs." And not to beat a dead horse, but it's important. The local needs within our community for lifetime and legacy housing for those that want to stay are from five to 10 times greater for market-rate housing than for affordable. There's a way to do it all and it would have tremendous impacts on climate change. So I think optimal generational housing, which is legacy and lifetime housing, would be a huge add to this plan. It adds to DEIB and can enrich and sustain virtually every aspect of the community so people can stay in Sammamish and we can add value across the board with, as Don Jaren would say, "only de minimis negatives, if any." Appreciate the opportunity to speak and real good job on this plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thanks to everybody who made public comment. Would anyone object if I just ask if we can spend one moment before we move into a motion to see if there's any questions for David or staff or anybody else? And I'm saying that selfishly because I have one. John, do you have any questions?
David, you mentioned revisiting a couple of those slides for options one, two, and three.
Bear with me while I share screen, just a sec here. Was it this slide, category two options, or was it this one?
I think it was this one.
The Alternative Approach to Electrification: Mandate Versus Soft Launch with Education.
Right. So looking at the language in the plan, which isn't very time-specific and integrating that with updates to state electrical code and building code, do we even need to have a phase-in? And I guess the secondary issue is, I'm not, you know, we covered a lot on residential stuff and can understand heat pumps and all of that stuff. Not so clear on large structures where traditionally they may have had boiler systems or... I just don't think I have enough information on big structures.
Can I just add to that? Because I also am struggling with this. Because I didn't, when I read the comment from the school district, from Lakewood School District, I didn't really understand. And I'm wondering if you had an insight into what they were asking. Because it, and the reason I say that is because it seems to me that the guidance that's in the plan right now is for new buildings and major renovations. And as far as I can tell by watching, they already do exactly that with their new buildings and major renovations. So am I misunderstanding why they have a comment or what their comment is about?
Yeah, so I think they're looking for a phased approach for major renovations or new buildings that might have already been scoped out as part of their capital plans. And part of that is, is when they go out for a bond, there's quite a bit of background work that goes into it, architecture, systems engineering, all those things. And they try to estimate their costs pretty closely and their costs are based on assumptions. And those assumptions might be based on a certain type of energy source and all of the other things that go along with that. And when we change our direction in the middle of their attempt to construct the facility, they're not always successful. Sometimes they don't build the building or something happens. You're just looking at the school down on 228 that was proposed that's seemingly not moving forward at this point in time. I don't know for sure. I won't put that on the record. I go look at the website. There isn't dirt being moved. So I think that the point that they were making is that they wanted to have some predictability so that they're not having to take funding from other programs that would be providing other services in the community and put those funds towards the additional costs that electrification or a different energy source might add to a project so that they were able to keep that project moving forward. They recognized that the city, and they're in alignment with the city. We want to do the right thing and make sure the energy profile of our buildings are not contributors to climate change and want to bring down their emissions outputs. But at the same time, they're also caught in a bit of a dilemma because if they're forced to do that, then they're going to... And they do watch building code changes, right? So they will be watching that and they will be attempting to submit and vest prior to those changes being implemented. Many builders do that, we're all familiar with that. But they are looking for that predictability to know that the projects that they have in the pipeline, that they've already worked up, will be able to continue to proceed without having to make a really difficult decision later whether to cancel the project or take dollars from another program in order to keep the project moving forward. I think that was the gist of what they were trying to say in that comment about energy and buildings. And they would, you know, their, one comment I received is, what if they had some sort of a waiver for projects that were already publicly funded and that had been through some sort of bond process? So they were looking for some level of protection to ensure that they weren't going to be faced with a major cost shift as part of this adoption of this plan.
Does that kind of address what you were curious about, John? Okay. Anyone else? So I'm going to ask my question, and it's really a, can you confirm this statement or not kind of a thing? Because I believe this is correct, but I don't want to say it without, you know, getting some feedback. And I'm not intending in any way to minimize this plan, but is it correct to say that this is a foundational guiding plan? But anything in here that says mandate or change or whatever is really only a guideline. And those things don't actually happen until code revisions are reviewed and implemented and rules are changed and implemented and the Sustainability Commission studies it and takes action and then the city elected, City Council takes action. So is it fair to remind people that, and I think this is right, this is a great guideline, but the actual changes that will someday occur require an administrative process, a legislative process, almost anything that actually is going to change will require follow-up?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Yeah, and I think this is really for our discussion, but I think it's important for all of us to keep that in mind that, you know, the Sustainability Commission is going to do a lot of work with this. And this is absolutely a great document, good guideline. Will establish a foundation for a lot of things. But for example, the school district worrying about that is a fair comment, but it's possible that by the time we get around to actually mandating it, some of those projects might have already moved forward. It's hard to predict, I think. And I think people should keep that in mind, that there's still plenty of opportunities to change, to manipulate the language, to come up with new code in the future. So I thought that that was correct, but I want to make sure everyone kind of keeps that in mind. This is a guideline document. This is not a mandate or a change in any actual implementation. Frankly, we as the Planning Commission have a lot of work to do on a lot of these topics like TDRs and others already. So Mike has his hand up. I'm going to ask if Mike can go ahead.
Actually, it somewhat builds on what you were just saying, which helps us as we go through and decide if we want to recommend any changes. And the fact that this is a living document, which I take as there will be modifications, mark building on some of what you were saying, there'll be a legislative process. And it seems that a number of, to me, in my reading, of the potential recommendations, the category twos, for example, are providing some specific guidance that it may very well be that in the general discussions that are going to go on through the legislative process, what the Sustainability Commission is doing, that they will be addressed. And so, you know, should we be more specific or view this as a living document that they will in fact be changing over time? So I think that's a, there's a question there in terms of how much specific guidance should we provide through, you know, motions for changing the plan as currently written? And David, perhaps you could kind of elaborate a little bit on that.
I hope I'm getting this right, but I understand it to be, you know, how much guidance or, I guess, what would making these changes actually achieve? And I don't mean to be negative here. I'm simply trying to say, as a living document, there is, we, you know, first of all, it's really good that this is a living document. What we don't want is a document that just gets put on a shelf and is not opened and talked about. We also know that we're not going to always get it right the first time. We wish we could, but it's not usually how it works. So I think there will be additional opportunities to make changes. The category-two items that we have listed here, and I'll share my screen again. I apologize, I have to find that. There it is. It's one of those window pop-ups that popped up out of nowhere just a minute. So here they are. If I could figure out how to get rid of this thing. Here they are. So the first one is complete additional formatting changes so that prioritized actions are more clearly identified. I think that's really a readability. It's making sure it's drawing attention to those things that are most impactful, that we should really be considering in our day-to-day lives and operation of our homes and businesses and community. The second is build on natural gas language updates by adding a category-three item to recommend to City Council that addressing this natural gas usage be the main priority of the Future Sustainability Commission. Do you, as a commission, want to add that? Do you feel that's valuable? Do you feel it's important to highlight that addressing natural gas usage, based on what we know, should be the main priority of the Future Sustainability Commission? That's, I think there's value in that. Based on what we've heard tonight, based on what we know about the community profile, and based on what we know about the biggest area of opportunity, that seems to hold true. Number three is staff suggestion based on CAG item, CAG II item, is create and add a how-to-calculate-your-emissions-sheet to the Climate Action Plan that provides conversions and/or worksheets so that people can see how their emissions align with the metrics and the cap. And what this is, is beyond a what-you-can-do sort of approach and some of the background information is really just cutting to the chase. This is how you calculate your own emissions so that you can understand your role and how big your footprint is in relationship to some of the outputs that we're talking about here as part of the plan. Those are the three that we have queued up. At the end, after breaking it all down, those are the three that remain, aside from the other that Commissioner Bresko added about adding additional language that informs the reader about the size of the role of Sammamish compared to the state, the federal and state and county roles, which is, I think, what I heard him say. So that would be a number four that you could potentially consider. But beyond these, you know, it's really up to you to determine what level of additional clarity or instruction you want to include. We feel like the electrification thing is going to be challenging for us on many levels because of the upgrades that need to be made to the grid over time. PSC has told us that they do have some concerns about a very fast rate of electrification and the adequacy of their grid to support that. So we do want to have that time to work with PSC. We also know that there's a bit of an equity issue with electrification and that if we're man- and that if we're mandating electrification, that it does add a cost. I mean, I just went through that recently, I, I won't tell you the number, but it's a bit staggering. So unless you have savings that you are putting towards it or funding for that, you're not going to be able to do that. And if we're mandating it, well, that's challenging. That it does add cost to public projects, then if those public agencies are not planning for that, that they could be caught, especially because you don't invest to energy codes until you submit a building code, building permit. You might be in the permit process, working on your entitlement, say, for example, like Washington School District is working on a new school in the town center. Right now, they're going through the entitlement process until they actually get to the point where they've received the entitlement approval and they submit a building permit, they do not actually vest to the energy codes. So there could be two years, three years in the, in the entitlement process, working out access, drainage, circulation, and all the other things that go along with that. And you might, they might see that change coming but not be able to actually protect themselves against that change in their, their budgeting because you don't vest until you submit building permit. So there are, there are a whole host of things to think about here, and that's one of the reasons why we, we recommend as staff, moving to a more of a phased implementation approach for electrification because we really want to make sure the ground level of education is out there, that people are aware of it, that people know what the options are, that we're able to start working on, on, you know, a vetted contractor network, on funding options, on connecting people to programs, all those things before we start to really start to require that mandate. So we as staff think that, that a phased approach would be more beneficial to the community actually being successful and might actually result in less opposition over time. And we, we don't want to have, we want to have a successful policy. So that's a lot, I know, but I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Baughman, and we'll see, see where this goes.
All right. I, and this is entirely my fault, have probably led us into deliberation without a motion, and so I apologize for that, but I think now is the appropriate time, and then we can continue the deliberation. If someone would care to make a motion, that would be much appreciated. And don't all jump in at once. And by the way, there's a couple of recommendations in the packet, so you're welcome to read one of them.
So I'd be happy to start with a recommendation. Move to recommend the city council approve the cap as drafted in Exhibit 2. And amended by commission-selected edits, which probably would include the phased electrical options one and three. I don't have good enough notes here, but some of my, Commissioner Bresko's comments.
Any of the category two?
Yeah, and, and the category two stuff, yeah, that's on the screen right now, including number four. And a recommendation, add the future Sustainability Commission work, plan items identified in category three in Exhibit 1. I guess I covered that already. So we'll start there.
Great job. Okay, is there a second?
A second, Ben.
Okay, thanks, Ajay. So it's been moved and seconded, and I think John did actually a pretty great job of covering most of the things we've talked about. So discussion, deliberation on the things that he proposed be included, or anything else?
Can we just re-summarize them?
We could try. So, John, there's a nice wall here between us, so you can't smack me on the back of the head, but I will try to summarize what I think you proposed, which is adopting the Climate Action Plan with the recommended phased implementation for BEU 2.4, with the recommended language modifications by Commissioner Bresko, which there was a couple of those, and with category two items that we're actually currently looking at, which is 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and an additional one, 2.4, which is escaping me at the moment, but I'm sure, and we have that written down. And then also, which was part of the original plan, to recommend the category three items as a work plan for the future Sustainability Commission. That should be, I think, what we covered. What was the 2.4, category 2.4 that, that was suggested?
I believe that was Commissioner Bresko's, excuse me, edit. Let me just go back here.
I don't think I wrote that.
Yeah, looking at my notes, that, that's what I recall.
This is, this would be the 2.4 here, which would be the addition of language around the majority of greenhouse gas emission reduction comes from actions by federal and Washington State agencies, while the least comes from changes within Sammamish government operations. So we would find the place to thread this in into the language in the cap, into the executive summary or elsewhere, as, as indicated on this slide.
Okay. Is that, actually, this is one of the more complicated ones that we've done on the Planning Commission in a while, so good job. It's, it's a good place to start. Anybody have any comments about any of those items or would like to suggest changes or so forth? Go ahead, Mike.
No, that just a clarification. So in, in the motion, does that include the item, category three items that had been listed? So ties to the master plan, waste management, the education piece, there's, you know, two others, I think, in there. So just, I just want to know what's, if that was included in the motion or not?
Yeah, I think the intent was that all of the cat, all of the staff included category three items would be moved forward as a suggested work plan for the future Sustainability Commission. And of course, that's really a starting point, they'll, the council and, and the commission will have other, obviously, other plans.
And, and again, just clarificate, just so that we're very clear on this, sorry. But so there were, these that are shown right now, the category three items for consideration were, as I understood it from the shot notes from the commissioners primarily, and not staff-recommended? And Mark, you just mentioned about staff-recommended category three items, which I'm not sure there are any.
Yeah, I probably, I'm sorry, I probably misspoke. The summarized, staff summarized comments from the Planning Commission is probably the right.
So it's really the list that had been presented, both category three and category two items.
Yeah. Yeah, I think some of us who submitted those were excessively wordy, and so it was necessary for staff to sort of simplify it into something somebody could actually use, and I'm talking about me.
Thankfully.
Yeah, good job.
So to make sure we understand from the staff's side, we're talking about all the 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, a new 2.4, as outlined by comment from Commissioner Bresko, all of the, the three series, so 3.1 through 3.7, as a recommendation for work plan for the Sustainability Commission, and also changes to, I'm sorry, just one second here, BEU 2.4, to, with regard to phased, a phased approach for electrification.
Yeah, that's the motion.
And also integrating language on the tension of mandating electrification with the costs of building into the recommendation letter.
And I would invite comments on that last clarification.
Provide explanation if you'd like. The, the, the community advisory group identified that there continues to be this tension between mandating versus incentivizing and prioritizing, and we continue to see that, we're watching it unfold at the state Building Code Council level, there's been litigation on this topic at the federal level, we're watching that and seeing where that goes. All paths are, are pointed towards, you know, smooth waters with mandating electrification, but we also want to make sure that we get it right in the community, that we give the community a chance to understand and to be more informed on this topic, and also for, you know, early adopters to help with, with that. As I was describing earlier, you know, there's, there's opportunity for us to really help teach the community about the benefits of these systems. We really want this policy to be successful, and we want to be able to mandate this going down the line so that our longer-term efforts are not going to be somehow clouded by local problems, local litigation, local opposition. So we really want to have that opportunity to make that ground-level entrance, to set the foundation for the future, so that once we do flip the switch, and we are serious about flipping the switch, to, no pun intended, to electrify homes and require all the way from new construction, large commercial, all the way down to life cycle replacement of things like furnaces and hot water tanks, we'd like to get there, but there is a lot of work to get there. It's not so simple as just dictating that it be mandated. So really, that's it, is highlighting that tension, that, that it's really important that we electrify as a community in order to address the profile from our residential emissions profile. However, we do need to be able to have that, that opportunity to do that groundwork upfront to get the community on board so that it's a much easier process when we do flip the switch to electrify.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you, David, for the explanation. So option one is changing the wording from mandate to recommendation or prioritizing to electrification? Is that what the intent of option one is?
Option one would be moving away from just a straight statement of mandate to integrating something like this into the language, showing how this will work.
Okay.
And the, the idea here is that, you know, there, there's still going to be electrification happening, and we're going to be working really hard to connect people to programs, make sure that those opportunities are available, that our staff are trained, you know, to, on all these issues, and we would get to, according to this schedule, and, you know, this, this is something that, that we see as feasible. You could change this, you could move up mandate to year two, but we see, we see mandating in a phase, in phase, you know, update codes and require electrification for projects of specific thresholds, new construction and major renovations would happen in year three, and then mandating changes in year four would be everything.
Gotcha.
And that would be the point where homeowners have had four years of, of public information, they've been given opportunities to learn about it, and they might be knowing that, hey, I'm going to have to replace that hot water tank in a few years, I'm doing electrical work on my panel, this year I might as well add a, another wire, another run to the, to the tank, so that when I, that does go out, I could just put in an electric version of it. You know, it's all those things that we want to make sure there's equity involved, there's, there's training, there's, you know, it's all the things that go along with that program.
Thank you, David.
Carrie, did you have something?
David kind of answered it, because I was wondering, you know, could we move it up if a year in, it's going really well? Make it happen sooner?
And our goal would be to craft a replacement for BEU 2.4, the action itself. The, the thing we've noted is that the action itself of BEU 2.4 is, is somewhat direct and firm versus the description that goes along with it, which is a little more in line with, with phased implementation, encouraging, you know, there, there's quite a bit there. Obviously, the building codes will be a mandate, so whenever that happens, it happens. That's not in our control. But, but, but if you read that word mandate, you know, and, and the, the, the community advisory group did review another version of this that was prioritize, incentivize, and facilitate all electrical mechanical equipment with new construction and major renovations. And the, the direction at the end was to flip it to mandate. That was when they read the final version of this, and that was what came out of that. You know, as, as staff, we, we just, we see some tension with, with mandate, and we're not quite there as a community. I think if, if many people knew that the city was wanting to go down this path, and if you look at the rest of it where it says new construction and major renovations for all building types and forms of ownerships, we don't know how to define major renovations, we don't under, we know what new construction is, but we, we'd rather go one step further and say, yeah, we're willing to mandate all the way down to life cycle replacement for mechanical equipment if we go through a phased approach. And we actually think it will be, it'll get us farther in those three years, once we are, than we would by using this. We think the other version here is more potent than this here, because what this does is it gets you to everything requiring electrification four years out versus this, which only addresses new construction and major renovations.
Go ahead, John.
So I think Mark had the key point here, in that this is a plan and a living document, and it is important, I think, that we do literally put a stake in the ground. So the proposed phased approach still does that with, and gives, you know, time, timeframes, it's a plan. And maybe it'll get changed, maybe it'll get moved up, as Carrie suggested, maybe it won't. But I agree that just putting out the mandate without some, something behind it, how's this going to work, is, is a bit threatening. So having this more phased approach with mandates gives us something to work against, gives the school district something to plan against, gives a developer some certainty.
Suni.
I do like the phased approach, David, because that gives people to get prepared more towards it, I'm talking about myself too, right, and save money towards that. Instead of mandate comes as a, you know, you're dictating them to, you know, it, it's just the word itself is a little bit threatening, so I like the phased approach.
I wanted to just add the comment too, that I don't want to change anything necessarily, but I hope that we can convey to the Sustainability Commission that in all of this, we need to keep an eye on trying to be cognizant of whether we're in lockstep with state code changes and how the timing works on this, and the communities around us and what they're doing. I think all of this has a much greater chance of being successful if, to some degree, Redmond, Issaquah, Sammamish, Bellevue tend to be moving together in the same direction, maybe not identical, because, you know, people who are going to be forced to replace their gas furnace with a heat pump that costs an additional $3,000 or I don't know what it is, and in Redmond, they're not being asked to do that, and in Issaquah, they're not being asked to do that, they're going to be down here at City Hall with pitchforks. And, you know, I think that just having an eye towards what others are doing, so that if, if we're all kind of doing something pretty similar, even if it's a year off, then people will recognize that that's the direction the entire kind of region and community is moving. Mike, looks like you have your hand up.
Yeah, just, I guess to pile on, so to speak, or build on this. I, Mark, earlier you mentioned about the, the work of government, you know, the discussions that would go on the legislative process. And I find that the phased approach is actually describing what would be more realistic to implement. And I recognize what Phil was saying earlier about the importance of getting progress faster and mandating is a way to do that, but realistically, for reasons that other commissioners have mentioned, and then recognizing the whole legislative process, that phased approach actually looks pretty reasonable. And actually, you know, to David Pyle's comment, might actually get us further ahead just down the road a little bit, so I certainly support that as well.
You have your hand on the button there, Ajay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, chief. Actually, I would second your comments, which is that, you know, there is a shock value that comes to it. If we, if we say mandate on it, there is a shock value that comes to it when people are planning whatever renovations they're doing, or if it's small or whatever renovations they're doing, or if it's small or big, and it's going to be a pretty huge factor. I was not up to it until I heard your comment about the shock value, which was that, as you think about it more and more, you start to realize, yes, if I'm just going to doing a small thing, do I need to worry about it right now, or do I need to worry about it later? So I'm now a new convert into the phased approach to say that, let's go ahead. That sounds like the plan that we would want to go forward for, so I'm a yes for that.
I just had a...
Always like converts.
Question.
Go ahead, Gary.
So would the, would the actual verbiage be in the 2.4? Could we put phased instead of mandate, just at the top? Or would it look more, you showed what it might look like.
Sure. Phased implementation.
Yeah, opposed to prioritize or incentivize?
Yeah.
Just call it what we are calling it as phased.
Yeah, we, you know, one thing we liked about the, I'll share my screen again, but the model that we showed was that it kind of showed on a timeline. We want to hold ourselves accountable. And if we don't include a real sort of framework for how that works, then things tend to get pushed down the line. So if there was a way for us to somehow integrate the phased approach language into the actual action, you know, maybe we could amend it to include this table here in some form. The other, so that, I think, editing it to say phased, yes, but we also, at the same time, want to, you know, we hear what comments were being given. We want to hold ourselves accountable to hit those targets. And if we're taking a phased approach and we're not using the mandate approach, there's risk that we could take a long time to phase it in versus having that mandate word in there is something that community members can say, hey, city, you said you'd mandate this, why haven't you done that yet? So that's my only concern with leaving just phased, as opposed to somehow integrating the schedule that we included into that action.
No, I mean, I definitely agree for schedule editing. I'm just not sure if you're taking that page and putting it under 2.4.
I think that's a question. I'm curious what, I see Miriam has her hand up, so she's usually the one that keeps me in line when I have these crazy ideas to edit things that don't look so good.
I was going to suggest perhaps changing the action to say something like, implement a phased mandate. And then modifying the description to align maybe in a more shortened version of what you saw on the slide there. So maybe highlighting, like, sorry, David, can you go back to that slide you were just showing? So including some of these, but maybe he's talking about step one, outreach and education, step two, develop options, and that it spans like a four-year timeline, which could be modified by the Sustainability Commission, or something to that. Open to suggestions and feedback.
Yeah, I like having both phased mandate or mandate.
I would only say that I think all of these words probably will get changed through the discussion and the legislative process, and I'm fine with that, right? This is supposed to be a guideline that then people can take and decide what's practical, what makes sense, what can be accomplished, what's a goal, and make it happen. So, I mean, I, you guys want probably specific guidance, but I actually think how that process works will result in a good outcome. So whatever the language says, in the end, it is going to be a code requirement. And to me, however, we get from here to code requirement, you know, in a reasonable amount of time, I think there's much bigger challenges in this than what the words say. So I'm fine with whatever the words say.
Okay, so if we go with the motion, then does that get sort of sorted out as we go along?
We can, we can, you would be welcome to, you know, recommend making a change. That would be fine. I would support either one.
I'm just not sure exactly what is in the motion when we reference phased implementation.
I think the, I think the motion was really this right here.
Okay.
The motion had included Option 1, and I believe we got direction to include language on the tension around unidentified, or Option 3. So the letter would highlight, hey, there's this tension with electrification that we want to, consistent with the CAG letter, just really flagging it for the council. And then what we were just talking about was amending the Option 1 here. And what I understand that to be was that it would, it would, I don't know if Miriam can jump in and actually say what language she said, because it sounded a lot better when she said it.
She said phased mandate.
So as the original poser, I am absolutely fine with David and Miriam wordsmithing this. I think we've beat this horse a bit. And they completely understand our intention here. So I don't think we can tonight come up with the exact words, but I think staff would be able to do that on our behalf and understand the intention.
And honestly, it's here. It's really just taking these pieces and putting them together in a document that then the council can read through and understand. And I'm confident that that can be accomplished.
Got it. Yeah, I just wanted to understand before I agreed. Yep, sounds good.
What else? Mike?
I have a, this is maybe a clarifying question, but the category 3 changes, which are included in the motion right now, they all have an impact on work plan budget, might require some policy analysis. So I'm trying to get a sense of the level of effort for these. And in particular, to just drill into one here, is the, if we adopt that motion as current, would include us recommending to the city council that it considers restarting the transportation master plan. And I'm just wondering, how big of a lift is that and how much of a benefit? And I just want to add one last comment, is that about having strong ties to the transportation master plan, there's strong ties to housing, strong ties to what's being done in town center, strong ties to the forest management plan. We've got a public comment that was written about tree retention and so forth. So, you know, I'm wondering both the level of effort specifically around transportation master plan, since that was part of the motion, but the benefit of including this particular one, given that there's a need to have strong ties to, you know, many other plans in the comprehensive plan. So kind of two questions in there. David, could you elaborate a bit, please?
Yeah.
Before we go for it, can I propose extending the meeting by 15 minutes? We're at almost 8:30.
Make it a half hour and all.
Okay. I'll propose extending it by half an hour.
Second.
But moving to second, we extend to nine o'clock. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Thanks, Ajay.
So I, if Miriam is there, I can't see through the screen setup I have, so if anybody's raising their hand, feel free to just jump in. I would say that we're likely to see what would be a transportation master plan become the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. We're working really hard on that right now. We're going to be talking about that on the October 21st workshop, so look forward to that. But we might find that 3.3 is somewhat moot, because the transportation element of the comprehensive plan ultimately addresses those items that would be addressed through a transportation master plan, in which case then we would be looking for any updates to the cap for alignment on those items specifically related to vehicle miles traveled and alternative modes of transportation. You know, another thing that we're working on is a transit plan right now. So again, we probably would want to make sure to revisit the climate action plan so that there's alignment between the climate action plan and the transit plan, once that's done. I think this holds true for many. I mean, you could, you could strike 3.3 and move forward with the others, because I think the others are really more specific to the work that the actual Sustainability Commission would take on in the near, in the near term. And this setting of work plan is more about the near-term work plan. In order to start a commission, you need to have a work plan. So I think what this is trying to do is saying, hey, this newly formed commission really needs to take on these things, you know, educational infographic about how electrification affects the electrical grid, one-page handout on the changes and the go-along with electrification. What are some of the changes that, I see Miriam has her hand up.
I was just going to clarify, this particular item was created in response to a comment that came in about the plan should have strong ties to the transportation master plan. I think this wording could be modified by the planning commission to maybe talk about transportation planning more broadly, the comprehensive plan, transportation element, or some combination of those to carry through what I'm assuming was the intent of just making sure we're aligning.
So I guess maybe one comment I'd make is I think it's probably somewhat implicit that the Sustainability Commission will have to coordinate with the transportation master plan, the, you know, pro plan, the comp plan. I mean, that's just sort of implicit in the work of a commission and work of the city government. So I'm not sure we need to say this. I don't remember who's, if this could have been my, I'm not sure whose comment this was. So maybe it's not as necessary, because it's sort of implicit in the work of the commission.
So this was from the missing commissioner tonight.
Oh, okay.
And he has a strong background in transportation planning and understands these things. And I appreciate this comment. You know, we want to make sure that we, first of all, get some form of a TMP done as a city. We all, as staff, support that. And second, once that's done, making sure that those elements in the climate action plan that relate to vehicle miles traveled reductions and alternate forms of transportation and electric vehicles and those things that might fit into a TMP are revisited to make sure that they're in alignment. We don't want to build a cap, put that, you know, have that out there, and then do a transportation element or a TMP and have that out there, and then have a gap between those documents. And I think that, I'm hearing this comment correctly, it's just make sure everything's in alignment.
I agree with that, because sometimes, like, you know, each commissions, they might have their own action items or action plans, and if they don't have alignment with the other, like the transportation or the pro planning or whatever, you know, they might be, you know, doing the same action items, just to eliminate that it should, it's better to have alignment. But if we want to change that to other plans that city has, that would be okay, but I don't mind having transportation plan there, though.
You know, you could amend it to recommend the city council that the Sustainability Commission be tasked with updating, identifying updates to the climate action plan for alignment with other new or updated city planning efforts, something like that.
Yep, something like that would work.
That basically says, hey, whenever we finish something, we need to make sure we're checking the cap, that it's in alignment.
Just from a practical standpoint, is that? Sorry, Mike.
Yeah, well, just in terms of procedure here, so what we would do then, I think, is make an amendment to the original motion. And it would be something like to strike, you know, item, whatever that was, 3.3. I had it in front of me, and then I lost it.
3.3.
3.3. And either just leave it at that, or add, David, the language that you used, which was really great, if we could have caught that about, you know, ensuring alignment with the other plans that are out there. So this was a procedural question. Do we need to make a motion to amend the original motion at this point if we want to do something with 3.3?
Yeah, if you want to modify 3.3, then we need a motion and a second to amend.
Well, I would do that. And the motion would be to eliminate 3.3 from the list that was originally proposed in the motion and replace it with that language that David used, which was, and I didn't catch it all, but to ensure, to task the Sustainability Commission with ensuring alignment with the other plans that the city has, something like that.
Yeah, I think that, maybe I can catch the language that David said, which was recommend that the city council task the Sustainability, task the Sustainability Commission with updating the climate action plan for new or modified plans within the city. Something close to that, right?
That sounds good.
Maybe Miriam has a better language, just kidding.
We could wordsmith it just a little bit. Yeah, we understand what you're trying to achieve here.
Okay, so that was Mike's motion to amend, is our second?
Our second.
Okay, so it's been moving to second to make that amendment. Any other conversation comment about it? Ajay? No?
No, I was just going to say aye. Aye. I jumped the gun.
You're in a hurry. Okay. So then let's take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of making that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay, so we've amended 3.3. Other amendments or changes or comments? I guess the last thing I wanted to just say is that I think this is a great step for the city, and it's important to recognize that the message is important. And there's going to be a bunch of work that probably happens that changes some of these things and the timing, and this is a good guiding document to start with. But even though, as Commissioner Brusco said, the city's ability to actually impact the number of tons of CO2 and the methane emissions that we make may be somewhat limited. We may be, you know, kind of at the mercy of others. I think that the message that we are sending and that we have somewhat of an audacious plan in some parts is extremely important for the community and for others as well. So let's not lose sight of the fact that, yeah, we can dig into the weeds and, you know, discuss one years and three years and mandate and require. But in the end, the important part here is that we're establishing that this is a priority for our community, and people are going to have to get on board. Some will like it and some won't, but I think that the fact that we're establishing a new commission is a pretty good representation of how it's a priority for the city. So I'm in support of this. I thank the people that have worked on it, including the, what was it, the Climate Action Group, CAG. I think that's great work, and I'll be interested to see how some of this works. And I'm already thinking about when my furnace is going to have to be replaced, so. All right, if there's nothing else, I'm going to call a question, ask for a vote. So we're voting on the original motion as amended. I'm not going to try to repeat the original motion, because I think we've all covered that pretty thoroughly. We have the one amendment to modify it 3.3 slightly. And so I'm going to call the question, ask for those in favor of making this recommendation to the city council. Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, no? All right, that passes, and I'm going to use my gavel. Thanks, everybody. Good work. As I said, that was one of the more complicated ones in some respects that we've done, so good job. Thanks for your efforts. Okay. Let's see, any other comments from staff? And I will just point out that we did our public comment as part of the public hearing, so we don't, typically at this point, we would do agenda-related public comment, but we don't need to do that tonight. So any other comments from staff? Anything on the schedule? I guess there's a reminder for everyone for Saturday, gosh, is it the 21st that we have an all-day workshop? And I'm hoping this can be raining hard that day, so I don't feel bad about being inside.
That is correct. So we do have a workshop planned for October 21st, Saturday workshop. Starts at nine o'clock in the morning here in this room. We did, you'll note when you get home, if you haven't seen it already, we did drop off, unless we were going to plan to, I don't know if Evan's still here. We've been delivering workbooks to everyone's home, paper copy. We try to be a paperless city, but this one really warrants printing it. And we ask that, you know, when you have time to spend some time going through it and reading through the existing policies, and it's a reminder that the effort isn't really... And it's a reminder that the effort isn't really to wordsmith the existing policies. It's to make sure that we understand the general themes that were in place in 2015 when we adopted the comp plan. And we're going to be considering what has changed since then. State law, regional, regional policy and direction, county policy. We need to be in alignment with all those to get a certified comp plan. And also, what's changed in the community? What are our new priorities? What are some of the different things that we're doing? And what themes might be missing or misaligned with where we are today? And that's really it, is the high-level topics or the high-level concepts. And we're hoping to get feedback from all of you. We're going to be in roundtable conversations and reporting out on what we learned. So really looking forward to it. And we'll see you then. I don't think we'll have another meeting before then, so I'll see you on the 21st. The packet was delivered to your doorstep.
Evan just walked in.
Oh, he's got them here, actually, for you all. He didn't go to your homes. But for
Thank you. I was like
For all of the other participants who, in the workshop, Evan went to their house today and dropped a packet off, so.
I was like, when is this coming? I did, I missed this thing. Thank you.
I'm just glad to know that Evan still doesn't know where I live. I'm still safe. All right, anything else?
Yep. Write it up. He's in his meeting.
I will remind everybody that tomorrow is Friday, the 13th. So, and I heard an ad use the music from Hill Street Blues on the radio, so that reminded me to tell you since tomorrow's Friday, the 13th, let's all be safe out there. That's it for this evening. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you on the 21st.